Yeah.
Yeah. Guests. So for folks that are joining on the Zoom call, if you're not speaking, will you please make sure your microphones are muted? If you need to speak, raise your hand function on there, I believe, or just kind of call out your name and we'll get to you.
Okay, so we are on item number three, which is approving the agenda. Any additions or distractions? And will we approve the agenda presented second, seconded by Donald Poole, all those in favor? Minutes, approve the minutes from the August fourth meeting.
No move.
Move by Bill Crossman, second emotion, all of your favor. Approve and sign treasures warrant number seven, so move.
Second.
Second by Donald Poole, all those in favor. Communications, island at risk, twenty twenty.
That was an email that was shared with you, just from a couple of folks that live out here. And there's concerns and things they've observed out here going on in terms of just activity relating to law enforcement issues. There were some incidences at Lanes Island with fireworks and a fight. She had communicated with you guys just to let you know their feelings towards law enforcement and the need to make sure there is law enforcement out here.
I just want to address the funding of the police department. We are not doing that. We're not suggesting that. We still pay county taxes that go to fund the police department. So please get your facts straight.
Anything else to add, folks?
What about what she wrote, whatever it was, makes you think she doesn't have her facts straight?
Well, I share the concerns and the rest of the email, but we're in a not, we definitely need a police presence agreed and not a defunding of the police department. What we wrote down was not funding of the police department, it's funding of the new contract for services that they're providing in excess of what we get through our county taxes. That's the part that I didn't appreciate.
Any other comments? Okay, speakers on the floor. If anybody joining virtually would like to speak, just let us know. Okay, hearing none. We'll go on to committee and department reports and appointments. Oh yes, appoint board of selectmen chair and co-chair. What's supposed to do is at the beginning of every fiscal year, we did not.
Well, we just, the vote was late, too.
Well, that's true, too.
Yeah.
I nominate Erica Ferreira chair.
Second.
Sorry.
All those in favor? And I'll abstain. Thank you all, I guess. And I nominate Phil Crossman as co-chair.
Second.
Seconded by Donald Poole. Any discussion? All those in favor? Now I can start this meeting. Road commissioner's report.
I think they got to most of the things that were on from the last meeting. They're still waiting on a few more signs to come in. Other than that, I think they got most of that. They'd continue the ditching work. Some questions or concerns?
A few things. The yield sign at the end of Roundy Island Road at Tilk Tunnel, we all know that yield sign is there. But right now, there's a large bush in front of it that if you didn't know that yield sign is there, you'd be masked.
For those that are on the Zoom call, can you please mute yourself?
Um, that's the note we're pulling?
It's up on there.
It's, oh.
I think I printed it earlier today.
I mean, I wasn't looking.
So that certainly needs to be addressed.
Yeah, there's more than one sign like that. I mean, there's speed limit signs in places where the bushes are growing, you can't see them. So, I mean, maybe if they're out doing one, they just check to make sure that even the other ones are needed.
Right. The crosswalks are at the eagle. And this came up, I think, last year, with first year we had to sign up. But, you know, people in pickup trucks have told me that if there's somebody parked in that handicap spot right in front of the store, it gets to be a pretty tight squeeze. I mean, really, maybe a better solution, not maybe not right now, but in future years would be to paint the crosswalk in sort of yellow or neon, something that way people don't see the crosswalk just there without the sign, without needing the sign.
It would also be better to move across the other side of the eagle.
Yeah, that's probably a better long-term plan. But for the time being, that sign probably isn't in the best spot.
Well, it certainly slows people down.
Well, it might cause an accident, too.
Well, I mean, when I, the other day I went by and someone swung their door open and I had to be on this side of the thing and I, I mean, then I had to swerve out the other way. I didn't expect someone to kick the door open in front of me, so.
Right. It's pretty tight there. And it's only when somebody's parked at that handicap spot. And the last one, and this one is probably going to ruffle some feathers, but the intersection of Atlantic Avenue and Water Street, that house there with the garden is encroaching the sidewalk anyway. It's pretty hard to walk on the sidewalk. And if you look down Water Street towards Main Street, you know, you cannot see down the road until you're well out into the road.
This is at the bottom of the medical driveway?
Yes.
Yeah, that is a bad one.
Yeah.
You know, and you know, it's a beautiful garden, but it's.
Needs some trimming.
Yeah.
Not at the bottom of the driveway. Are you talking about the intersection as you turn back onto?
On to Water Street.
On to Water Street.
The bottom of the exit.
Where the wheels lane and the monument is.
Yeah, at the triangle intersection there.
Yeah.
So we could reach out to that homeowner about, you know, solutions about trimming back, in a reasonable manner. I don't want a good garden to be destroyed, but.
There should be a safe, safe way to exit.
Where's Lakeview on the schedule, Matt? Do you know?
Done yesterday.
Huh?
Done yesterday.
Or what?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good thought.
Anything else for road commissioners before?
Um, I had a person ask about the big bush at the end of Brighton where it comes onto, enters onto East Mee. That bush there is, inhibits.
It does. Oh, yeah. In front of Morton's House?
Yeah. And they asked if that might be from.
Yeah. What is it? What is the town's legal length? How many feet do they turn back? Or do you have to get the homeowners to do it?
I'll have to look. I mean, there's something, obviously, there's a right of way in which we can maintain if it's outside the right of way and there's something impeding the view at an intersection. And there is some, you know, some liberty there to be able to, you know, keep that clear so the view isn't obstructed. But I prefer to the roads manual to say for certain what it says. We'll follow up with the property owners and send them the letter.
Anything else? Okay, going to old business, Hurricane Island Foundation tax abatement request.
The last meeting, we had the hearing. Do you feel ready, based on the questions that were outlined, last meeting, to just make a decision tonight? Do you want to notify the applicants and do it at a future meeting?
I'm not sure if my mind is going to be swayed. I feel like we've been made aware of the facts.
I can't remember the exact questions that we need to think about, like, I mean.
There was a few. I mean, on that, on the first set of questions, it had to deal with the acknowledging the taxes that were assessed on the tax map to lot seven. Now, all of Hurricane Island is with the one lot on tax map two. And that in September, on each of the tax years of just a tax year, eight, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty, that's what they were requesting the abatements for. So after we acknowledge what those dates were, the dates matter because it has to be after a year and within three of the commitments. And so one of the tax years in question, when they submitted it July second of twenty twenty, and the taxes were committed September eleventh of twenty nineteen, so that one hadn't truly, that was not beyond a year yet. The other two presumably are within the three. So that's, that was the first, kind of finding a fact in that matter.
So they have to wait to refile on that one?
That's the rule, that's the rule.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So the standing, and then the next one was the standing, or sorry, the that was the jurisdiction of the, of you as the officials, to be able to make, you know, to hear that and make that decision. The standing they have in seeking the abatement and the statutes that afford that to them and whether the question being posed or the fact to establish is whether Hurricane Island Foundation does or does not have the standing to seek the abatement of taxes assessed against the Hurricane Island Trust. So we know that through the abatement process.
That's a function of what we just discussed, but judge is going to make a determination.
So it's just standing and seeking an abatement, so the abatement meaning the tax bill you sent is what you're requesting an abatement for. So as a matter of finding a fact, you know, did the Hurricane Island Foundation, in fact, receive a tax bill for everything they're seeking?
No, they're seeking above and beyond that.
Right. So again, the question there is Hurricane Island Foundation does or does not have standing to seek an abatement of taxes assessed against the Hurricane Island Trust.
They do not. In my, in my opinion, they do. They have standing to ask for an abatement in Hurricane Island Foundation, but not Hurricane Island Trust.
And the next matter was clarifying the amount of, the amount of the abatement to consider. So the, as a result of those decisions that just went through about the authority and standing, the amount of taxes that issue in this appeal is, and to state, just state that, that they're appealing their application there to seek for, give the exact number.
Two, two years, right?
Now, they're seeking three.
Yeah, but they haven't had, they don't have, the year hasn't come up on the third year, right?
So the total for the three years in which their application seeks, which is just all it's asking to clarify, is eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. And as you pointed out, that they didn't receive that tax bill for that amount. Our records show a tax bill in each of those three years going out for, what was it, in fiscal year twenty, eight thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. And in twenty nineteen tax year, the tax bill received or sent for seventy-nine hundred and forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. And in tax year eighteen, it was a total amount sent to them for seven thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. So that's what, by the statute, through the abatement process, that's the tax bill they received. Not, not one for eighty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
And you can cross off twenty-three time being, but you can't consider it anyway until next month, which is a one-year period.
Right. So then it goes down through, the next thing to consider is the legal standard. And that, that's pertaining to real estate and personal property owned and occupied or solely used for their purposes by a literary and scientific institution. So one of the determining factors there is whether or not they are or not a scientific organization. And on remanded, currently on remand from Knox County Superior Court, it was dictated that to qualify under main law as a scientific institution, and an organization must be engaged primarily in scientific endeavors, including but not limiting to the conduct of scientific research. That's the standard in which that they are saying they qualify for the exemption.
So what did West say? Did they do what they're not qualified for?
So that's still on remand from the Superior Court. So if you recall, we went through that. There was an application submitted over a year ago by the foundation to be considered for tax exemption as a literary and scientific institution. And that's what the judge and the court had gone through and remanded back to us to further assess or clarify that. So that's still an ongoing process.
So why are we addressing this? It's still an ongoing process and it's going to be a function of what we just decided in executive session to have it back to the judge, but why are we talking about it now?
So this is, this is pertaining to the abatement application and request that's been submitted, which is a separate process from that of the tax exempt status that they're seeking through that application. And we're not talking about ownership, we're talking about whether or not they are a science, literary and scientific institution. So if that's something that's still ongoing, that perhaps is something that you might decide, perhaps you can't, because it is ongoing.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so, but on the other hand, I'm having a hard time distinguishing between these two.
If the court hasn't, couldn't make a decision, and West can't make the decision, and they know a lot more about the standings of scientific organizations, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making the decision. Because if we say they are one, then they're gonna, I mean, then they are, if we say they are one, then they are one, I guess, to the court. So I think that this is one that we can't make a decision on. At least I can.
Well, I feel like we should table this for a future meeting.
Table the, the, okay.
Yeah, we'll table this item.
I'll let them know that it will be tabled for a future meeting.
I don't really know.
So when do we have to have it?
Put it on the next agenda unless you have some clear.
Understanding.
Understanding from West.
Sure.
So, you know, we'll, we'll take it out sometime.
Yeah, I'll connect with him. And there is a, I believe, a sixty-day, unless both parties agree to extend it, time to make a decision on an appeal request, on an abatement request. But again, both parties can agree to extend that. So given the fact that there is an ongoing remand for the scientific nature of whether, you know, whether they're considered scientific, I can ask them to extend that until that's decided.
Let's go on to capital projects update.
Is that the one first one following?
No, capital projects update.
It's B, yeah.
On ours, it's different.
Oh, okay.
It goes A.
Sorry. I must know, so there was a.
Two As on there.
All right. So there's a law enforcement one on there?
Yes, it's A.
Okay. We'll come back to it. Capital project update. So you have, I hinted out just tonight, the follow-up from the engineers on the garage site. You know, that last meeting, you found out that they, they had done the site visit, but we really didn't have any sort of assessment or next steps or probable costs for any of the, what we do next. So they provided that, and they provide that to you. So we move, we can, we can decide to move forward on that. All in all, they do think the site's in good shape. And the, wouldn't need to purchase, in addition, you know, in addition to the one acre, a little bit more to get the layout where they proposed a salt shed would go. We had talked about that, the possibility of an additional one and a half acres out in front of that building, so it connects more, you know, connects better to the lot that we do own up there and goes right to that, that roadway, that divides the two blocks.
So this picture goes pretty much over here, because you see the road.
Right.
So they, they want, what's the acre just this right here?
So it's a, the acre would basically, you know, fit the build, the footprint of that building and go out to the tree line on the southern side and go out probably fifty feet or so in front of the building on the east side.
And then it just runs right along, you know, this.
Yeah, along the tree line on the west and north side. So that would be the acre, so it wouldn't be enough to be able to, they're proposing that the salt shed be sited on a more level ground, kind of southeast of that existing building.
Is that something that they entertain?
I would, yes, I have reason to believe that they absolutely would entertain.
Because that would connect the two pieces of property too as well, right? If we had that.
Well, we can connect them without it. It would just be a really thin strip to do that. And we wouldn't have the best site that we could for a salt shed. So the other things that they had pointed out in there, just in summary, is the structure and framing is in good conditions and there would be some modifications required. Thermal and moisture protection would need some repair and upgrades. They do, they did see that there was a spot in the roof that was leaking where you could see, and they don't think it's a full replacement, but they put in as a contingency the possibility of a full replacement in their estimate. And that would require a little more looking at that. More doors and windows, both garage doors, standard doors, and then windows, and it's free to the rooms created. Finishing for the walls and the floors and the occupied areas, like the office, bathrooms, mechanical rooms. Electrical upgrade right now, it's a hundred amp service, and they would recommend two hundred amp service, so we just need to upgrade that. Yeah, it's possible that the HVAC, the current boiler could be utilized, you know, to heat the, they're thinking that it could be used to heat the current, like, open garage area and that you could use, like, heat pumps in the smaller rooms. And then for the plumbing, the septic system that's up there now is just a tank, and so we still, you know, we would have to create a leach field and get the, get the gray and gray water to it. And then, though, they do note that the well that's up there recommending it have a filtration system put on it. So in that, they did give some kind of probable costs. They did give two layouts with two very, you know, two slightly different setups. And so one would require the moving or the relocation of some of the framing of the building, which would carry a higher cost, which is the cost they figured in, what's on the screen. They ran down through there the one point two four to put the salt shed up, almost a hundred thousand dollar savings from what the bids that came in previously by buying direct from the company. And so there's some savings there from what we saw. And then estimating eight hundred, about eight hundred and fifty to finish off and modify the current building to meet the layout and, you know, what was expected to go in there based on the previous findings. So there obviously still some room to work with some of that. It's just their estimate of the cost. It does factor in some of the inflation that we were seeing in the biz that came back to us in a contingency of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. If I add in there the costs either already incurred so far or in the two hundred and twenty thousand divided, building and land, you see there, it's, it could be estimated up to one point seven. They feel fairly comfortable or confident that that could be done within the one point six. I was hoping that it could be done for even less than that. So then there's still room to work that, and until bids actually come back to us or numbers come back to us, then, you know, we still don't know what it'll actually be. But there's still the ability to work it, but in all, they do feel that that's a good alternative to buy that building, good opportunity to buy that building and be able to go forward with that.
What about, at the end here, they say, in consideration of the purchase, the town's request that the seller install the septic system.
Yeah.
Provide the site work for the salt shed and provide the site work prior to the grid. So my question is, if they say no to all those things, how much more is it worth?
So those are all factored in already?
They are, okay.
And so it's just a matter of, is there, you know, just working with them to see if that's something, you know, the matter of time and being able to guarantee, you know, if, I think they feel really confident if we're able to move forward, the salt shed could be up before winter. In the interest of time, perhaps it would be best to work with an on-island contractor. And so, you know, they were just providing ideas for, you know, is there something we can do to work with them as part of that? So I think that's just requires more follow-up for them and more particulars of a closing land sale that we deal with them on.
So I'm sorry, so were we asking them to, like, provide services or we, you know, pay them for it as well? So it's just offering them up the work essentially? Is that, is that the, is that right?
Yeah, so you're getting into the weeds on the particulars of a sale, potentially.
We're not asking for them to do a pro bono as a part of the sale, okay?
So, well, we save some money. You know, it's a, we, there's only one door in front of the building. We only really need one door to work. You know, we don't need to have three doors on the side of that building. You know, that'd be a more easy way to cut down the cost. You know, you still have your, you know, it's good to have two doors. Like we said in the current building, you know, if one, if one truck breaks down, you've got everything stuck in there, right, behind that broken-down vehicle. So that's just more, you know, we don't have to make decisions on it tonight. Oh, you know, should we do this?
Yeah, we don't have to make a full plan decision. We can just say that we should go ahead and try and purchase this and.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Since it looks good.
Right.
Yeah, as long as you're feeling confident in that, we can obviously still work the layout and all of those things and still need to go up to, you know.
He's just showing that layout, what layout would, could actually look like, and giving us some costs of what those would look like. And obviously, there's ways to shave some money off this, which is good.
So if all this, if everything falls into place now, without any further delay, when could we hope to have this done?
I had to look at the, I forget what the purchase and sale was, and thought it was the end of September.
I mean, the, the whole project, the whole project.
Oh, whole project. Part of that depends on how quickly we start and when we actually move in, you know, if you were, when the pre, you know, for, or the current occupants move out. So they, they're confident that we'd be able to have the salt shed up before winter. And the building's already erected, so it's just a matter of finishing it off. So, I mean, I don't have a date to tell you, but I don't think they have any reason to think it couldn't be done by the end of the calendar year.
I mean, it all depends on getting bids in and getting someone up here, do it to availability of other people. They might already be booked up for this fall. So, I mean, presumably by sometime next year, we should be able to have it, everything that I would think.
So I know, so some of these numbers, you know, and just talking with the bidders that did submit for the project before, as it was presented, as it was put out there, they have talked with some of them, and a couple of them are interested. So it's a matter of whether you'd want to take the low bidder that presented, although rejected, in the interest of time and work with them, if they are interested to do that. Or if you do want to put out the bid again, total, if you put it out to bid again, I'm just saying, in the interest of time, if the goal is to have it by the end of the year, it's just something to think about. It's not right or wrong, it just might may delay, you know, the outcome of it. I think it was like a six, about a six-week turnaround time to put it out to bid and have them come back and, and decide. So you'd insert that in the middle of where we are right now is the only thing to think about.
So, and where do we stand with the, with negotiating a sale of a piece of land between our existing property and the garage? Where, where do negotiations stand?
The purchase and sale was just for the one acres. I think it's something, as Brent highlighted in his assessment, is something that we can continue to work, work the other acre and a half roughly.
You've talked to them about it, and your sense is.
They're open to it, but the particulars of it, we haven't ironed out anything yet. They're, you know, the, initially, they say twenty thousand an acre, that's what we've been willing to pay so far. The particulars of a, of a sale agreement probably isn't something we would normally potentially discuss in an open meeting, but we want to get in the weeds on it, but.
Go talk to them and try and get something hammered out.
Yeah, so what, what is it, in terms of when that's going to happen, when is that going to happen? Negotiations happen when?
Ongoing, and I couldn't give a hard date, I guess, is, you know, when it all comes together, but it's ongoing.
Do we have to have a survey of the land beforehand? And so there's going to be, it's going to take a while to get this done, and that, and it'll be.
Yeah, I'm assuming another probably three weeks or so.
I think in the next three weeks, you can have it done.
Possible. Some of it'll depend on availability of lawyers and closing and getting that banking stuff lined up. But I'm assuming we'd be able to hopefully get it out within four, within four weeks.
And what about the survey?
Hopefully within that time as well. There was one that could come out, I think, within two weeks, so that was, as long as it can get turned around.
Was there any update on the bridge?
The bridge. They are still, they did, just they don't have anything in writing yet, but they did hear back from the Geo Summit, I think it was, or whatever they were, the one that did the geotechnical work summit, I guess it was. Um, the helical piles was a big carrying cost in that bid that we, the one bid that we got. Um, there was only one subcontractor willing to give a number and it was a hundred thousand roughly. Um, so that's really what drove a good chunk of that up. And so they went back and said, looked at it other ways and they're, they did find another way to be able to do it. So it's mostly earthwork. Um, without driving piles. So, um, they're just going through that as they just got it yesterday. Um, and working with the. Uh, the company that had submitted the only bid, they are still interested as well. It's another one in the interest of time. If they can get it within the. Uh, a number within the approved amount, if you want to move forward with that, or if you want to put that back out to bid. Um, they've been very open. There's nothing guaranteed or anything, but it's just trying to work, work the numbers that had been submitted to understand why they were as high as they were. It's possible. Another issue that came up with only the one bidder was the timing of it. We wanted to have it done. Started November or October first. Um, some of them were saying, well, if it was starting in the spring, we could probably do that instead, but we wouldn't be able to mobilize and. Come out here for that small project, you know, this fall. And that would be a similar thing with, with them is they prefer a spring start time. Um, to do that. Um, so they're still just thumbing through some of that engineering work to reconsider some of the design. And then the, unfortunately, the main street, um, front, the grant we submitted in Northern Borders Regional Commission. Uh, was not awarded. Um, they had seven, over seventeen million dollars in requests and four and a half million dollars to fund. Um, it was a significantly increased, significantly bigger increase this year in, in requests. Um, there were a lot of. Projects that had more, a better match, uh, for funding that they didn't have to put as much of a mat, um, as much of the cost up for it. Um, I think we were looking for about twenty five percent. Of, of cost with about fifty percent of it unknown still, because we're still working on that grant. Um, and they also had, um, said that, you know, the population served, um, you know, was lower than what they could get in other places. So that scored a little bit lower, but otherwise they said it was a really good application. They see the need, but just didn't have enough money to fund everything that came in. So, um, that we are still working on the EBA grant. He was working on that with, um, the, the coast regional planning commission. Um, sorry, um, MICA, the Coast Economic Development District. And, uh, but it wouldn't incur and to submit that, I think we were aiming for, we were aiming for about two million, I think, from that one. And that one might increase. So still working those angles there.
So next up on our agenda is finally.
So I did hear from, um, one surveyor in particular. I'm going to try and reach out to a couple others to see if they can do it sooner. Um, one of them wasn't available until, um, end of September. Um, see if there might be another one that can come out sooner, um, to get that going. As far as the last meeting, we did share a lot with you from PIA, um, for consideration. Um, so I don't know if, I don't know if we decided, if we did, um, the ferry priority spot. Wanted to have something from the board sent to the ferry service for consideration. That's usually, usually it goes to the local tariff committee, then to the board, then to the advisory board, the ferry service. And then to management. This is something if that extra, they're requesting a second spot on the first boat or on a later boat. Um, just because of the increase in packages and parcels. I don't know if there was a decision at the last meeting. From the board about a priority spot for a second van. It's not used all the time, but at the time when it is used, you know, they're experiencing one van's not enough to get everything they need out here and then they get backed up. So one of the thoughts was, once the spear comes on, it wouldn't be a loss in spots. It's a bigger boat. It would. Potentially put one, a second spot on the bigger boat when it shows up or. Or the ten thirty, they, they also said something later in the day. So the ten thirty leaving Rockland would be the next available non-reserve boat. Um, it might still be an issue depending on. There's other priorities and to see if there are other ones. I don't know if there's, if there's, you know, willingness to, from, from this board to submit the request on their behalf for another priority spot or not. Be a sort of the same size, be the same size van, I believe they said, won't turn down.
See, the next advisory board meeting is, uh. In September, early September. So we should decide.
So they need one no matter what?
They have.
If they don't have the UPS.
Yeah, they have one now and then they, they're asking for a second one regardless. So it's. Only in the times when they do have the UPS packages, which isn't often. Do they then hope to be able to just use the UPS priority spot on the one o'clock? Um, but even without the UPS packages, they've seen a significant increase in. Backup if they can't get them. It's, and it's mostly when the planes don't fly or can't fly. One van's not enough to get everything out.
Well, I'm sorry. I was just curious if they would consider that to be a temporary issue with COVID. You know, people are ordering so much online that if, if and when this decides to, um, get better. They might not need that reservation. So maybe it would be a temporary solution.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Perhaps whatever we propose would be at a time limit.
Yeah.
See what things look like at the end of that period.
But I mean, people do need to get their packages up here. So I think we should request that they get an extra priority at least for. A year or six months or whatever, whatever you guys feel comfortable for a time period.
I agree.
And also I see no reason why they wouldn't be able to use the UPS reservation, right?
I'm assuming that that's a reasonable just discussion to have with, with the management over there that. As long as UPS isn't coming out and they're only asking for it because they're taking their package. I don't know why it wouldn't be reasonable to consider. You. From the board, from their advisory board's perspective.
I mean, that's, it's going to be paid for, so it's going to be there regardless.
Right.
Meaning it's an extra twelve dollars, whatever. If it's a priority, they still have to pay as a, as a reservation, right? So, I mean, the ferry's going to be giving more money. This, they don't have to send people down there to move vans up all day.
I think as long as they're aware of the, the process, I mean, just because it's written in there that they still sometimes, I think, still have to call. And so as long as they're aware of the process, I mean, like, so it would be no problem.
Well, they obviously are. They have one now.
Yeah, I would say. Their priority for next six months. Start off with six months.
And then revisit and see.
Yeah, see what we're saying.
I mean.
For the ten thirty boat or seven or?
Oh, um.
I wouldn't put it on some.
No.
You have two spots on the same boat.
Right.
Yeah.
The ten thirty.
Ten thirty. You said for six months?
Yeah.
And see how it grows.
Yep.
So. Sure, shall I make that pitch then?
Try that.
Six month.
Hopefully, hopefully things are. Straightened up for six months.
When is the sphere expected?
Into the calendar year, I believe.
Which calendar year?
I mean, I think the, they'd mentioned the, the boatyard was down to four workers working on the hundred and sixty foot boat at one point. But yeah, it's been pushed back significantly. I think it's the end of this calendar year still there.
Of course, I've already had it for a few months right now.
Are they down workers because of illness or just?
I think that was part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Early on in March.
Yeah.
Well, then our also wouldn't have alternative means of proposal.
Oh, oh, before they.
Right.
Launch this one?
Right, they had, they had a huge thing. They, they ended up ripping up the whole deck. Because there was whole. Put cleaner, burning or not, but maybe more efficient.
Oh.
But I don't know, it might take a while to get back those costs.
Yeah, the contract renewal was brought up last meeting for PIA. Um, there were some proposed changes from, from them. Um, I'll get a chance to think on those a little bit more or review those further.
I say, you know, I think it's perfectly reasonable that the town does the runway maintenance. You know, they estimate that costs around ten thousand dollars a year. Oh, well, they were two and sixes, not even ten thousand dollars. And we can, you know, as far as some sort of building, doesn't have to be very fancy or anything, just some sort of shelter. Put packages in during inclement weather. I think that's perfectly reasonable, but as far as the annual stipend or town owned delivery vehicles, I. Would drop pretty.
So those are.
Firm.
Those were in addition and separate from the contract piece?
What about the insurance? You said you were going to look into it.
They don't have a response yet. Send us still.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm all, like I said, those are, that's what I'm okay with and what I'm not okay with.
Yeah, I, I agree with that too.
I mean, they already, they, they already have their own insurance, don't they?
Yeah, the, what they're saying is that there's an additional cost to them. Because the requirements in the contract about holding us harmless and indemnifying us. Costs them an extra ten thousand dollars approximately. And that's the cost. That they were hoping that the town, if they were requiring it in the contract, that we would be willing to. Sharing. And I asked him if he could, I was in the Senate to talk, talk to him today and, um, from Ken from PIA. And so I'd share what our insurance covers, the document that we get from ours and, and share that and. Trying to understand at least from their insurance if that, you know, if there's things in there that just. Like we've had some of the other contracts or lease agreements we've had over the years, they just kind of became outdated and weren't valid anymore. So I think it's worth just. Um, having them look at that. So it's a matter of understanding if that's the cost of the terms of our contract with them, whether you're willing to see that or not. Well, I think that's something that we usually do.
So. Was it, uh, was that ten thousand? Was that ten thousand a function of a whole harmless agreement, did you say?
I believe so. So they, that's what they're, what Ken wasn't recalling when they had picked that up.
They have lots of doing business.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I got, why, why do you?
You know, if you mean.
Well, I mean, if our insurance is already covering, I mean, I think we should wait and find that out first. Do I mean, you just said that, right? You haven't seen what ours covers and what the did. I mean.
We haven't asked each, each company to review each other's policies and.
Yeah. But might, they might not need that.
Right.
Part of it, yeah, I agree. This is to agree to do something that might not be. But if, if it is, I, I agree there.
So where were you on the, the capital improvements? I mean, we're. Other than the survey, um, for the runway extension, Kevin had worked up some. You know, deals or ways to barter and get the, get the extension done for the most part, but it wasn't all the cost to do it. Um, there was, um, the understanding or assumption that they'd material fulfill would come from our, um, our lot that we had. Near the transfer station. Which in its current form may be okay to put underneath something like that, uh, may need to be screened. Um, so I don't know that you would necessarily want to just carte blanche, say, yeah, haul it in there and use that. You might need to put some finishing material on top of it still. I think there's still some unknowns there in terms of. Design for getting the drainage and getting things where you need it to be for function as a runway. Uh, but the cost associated with that is not something that we'd taken up and certainly didn't put in a budget this year. Just the survey is what we've agreed to do right, right now.
Do we have an idea of what those costs are?
I mean, just based solely on material and I guess on some of the labor, I mean, assuming none of it was, was, um. Provided or volunteered. I mean, I was assuming it was going to be in the fifty to seventy thousand range, but that's just based solely on material and, and the need for. Certain things. I mean, that's not, it's any sort of engineers or, you know.
Thank you. I, I think it's probably be a mistake, but okay. Oh, we don't have it in the budget anyways.
Right.
I mean, if they want it done this, this year, they'll have to put themselves if they. I mean, we still have to wait for the survey and see if we can even do it. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves on that one.
Yeah. We don't know enough information.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
And the, the storage building, I missed what you had said about.
Oh, I mean, just, you know, some sort of building, you know, you don't have to heat it or anything, just some sort of dry. Small building. You take the size of this square right here.
Yeah, I think they were envisioning at least like a, at least a ten by twenty.
You have to have electricity already, you know, until it's all.
Uh, I think they were envisioning that there would be power to it.
You gotta have a place for coffee and snack.
I mean, it was mostly to serve as a place to, I mean, what they have up there now to put packages in is just inadequate for its size at the moment.
Well, they probably just wanted a light and then sort of tea.
Right.
Well, I can, I can understand that. I mean, I'm watching light, but I, um.
Didn't need to be insulated or anything like that, you know, just.
Suppose, but it says waiting for waiting passengers. I understand if some people might have to wait for somebody to pick them up and it's raining, but if the storage shed, you know, you could just stand in there and wait.
Right, right.
I'm not that sure if any of those capital improvement. Uh, but on the other hand, we have to take it up next year, not this year.
Yeah.
So we'll take up the, continue to plan for the capital stuff and work with them on that. Um, I reached out to me about the insurance piece again, but you're okay with, we can presumably take the maintenance on. As, as of this year.
Who, who does the plowing anyway?
We do the plowing, but the mowing and the maintenance of the lights and the wiring, if something happens to those. The surface, you know, putting the stone dust on the, the stone dust they put down on the surface, um, and, and working that in. They usually rake it. I mean, whether we grade it or rake it, if we had to rake it, we don't have our York rake to tow behind, but we can face deal with that as it comes. So I mean, if that's something that we, you know, we can likely have to come out of the public works budget to be able to do that for this year.
Well.
Town properties doesn't, either that or it's about all of the parks commission's budget after you take the mowing costs out, so.
Very funny, okay.
Are they going to be looking for this each year then?
Uh. Yeah, I mean, yeah, I said the capital at one time, the annual stipend is, as, as they proposed, it would be an annual. Um, it was no estimated, just, you know, for two years kind of thing, which annual stipend. The vehicles they proposed that we take on, the, you know, all those other annual costs, I mean. I think Kevin had given me a number of, he was ballparking upwards of ten grand a year roughly is what's the value of what he was putting into it, um, for maintenance. You know, there might be ways that we could do, I was figuring that. There's some other things that, like the tree clearing, that's maybe a little bit more of a significant. Investment once in a while, like once every ten years or so is, limbs and trees grow up and encroaching the area in the zone. Um, they're currently at that point right now where, you know, that, some of that work does need to happen as well. Um, both on the approach and both approaches and, uh, and on the sides. Um, some of that we can do ourself if we can reach it with equipment. Some of it might need to be done in a different way.
All right. One question follow up.
All right, so I did, um, a couple of you had come in, um, for clarification. Not going to be able to grab my other document with the screen share on here and things. I'll try and remember it all, but the, I presented, uh, and this, what you're seeing on the screen and what you have. The first column was what was approved for fiscal year twenty and what was budgeted, and then what was presented at this year's town meeting. Was that next column, that one hundred and twenty one thousand? Um, so then next to that, to the right is the five different scenarios, scenario one being pretty, you know, essentially what we have now. Um, and then scenarios two through five is something just different, all, all based on work with Knox County. In the, in the short term, at the very least, you know, for this, this fiscal year. To work up different levels of coverage, um, the availability of those different scenarios. I tried to capture, um, the costs. As you're used to seeing it, um, and then. Um, and the sheets I provided you, there's three different versions towards the bottom of the page, you'll see the vinyl haven fifty percent. Seventy five percent and a hundred percent. Um, so those are all. Um, looking at not knowing what level of cost sharing the county may provide.
Well, I'm still of the opinion that. The biggest problem we've had. You know, in the recent past has been that we do not actually have a resident deputy. You know, if they cannot. Sign the contract with us that in that contract says that that deputy. Will be, you know, residing on the island, at least, you know, on the days that he is working out here. Then I don't see. The point in another contract at all. the point in another contract at all.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Okay.
I don't think that's gonna be a problem.
Well, I mean, does he think that, the sheriff said that likely would be a problem.
Right, because he said he's not gonna force us in ways to live somewhere, and I agree with that.
No, but Eric's not saying they have to live out here, he's just saying, well, which they have to stay out here anyway if they're on duty for ten hours.
Right, yeah.
So that would be. I mean, we don't want them going back to North Haven, is that what we're saying?
Yeah. I mean, at a minimum, you're talking they'd be here for four nights. If the schedule stays where they're generally working in the late afternoon of the evening hours, they're not gonna be able to get on a boat and go back, and you're not gonna go on a first boat and come back at, on a ten thirty boat. Um, so I mean, for at least those four nights, um, presumably they're, they'd be here, but it's, it's when their, their weekend or after they work the forty, that's the, the gap that I was trying to address to these other scenarios. If, if it's what I heard, you know, was more accurate from what we heard from folks was, we, we need someone here every day.
Yeah.
And it might, it's certainly probably, you know, certainly too much to expect the one person to be here every day, certainly without compensating it, which is kind of what was expect, being expected because, you know, if you reside here, then hey, you should be available. Um, that's just telling how the community is, how, how we, they all are, but it's not to be assumed, I guess, fairly of, you know, an employee of Knox County. So, looking at those other scenarios, how else might we accomplish that seven day coverage? Um, so the scenario two is a rotating deputy, meaning that what we saw last winter, they were sent out for four days, um, three nights, four days, and they stayed. I mean, there was someone different, I think they didn't come back for about eight weeks later or so, I think there's eight of them that were rotating that. Um, and then we, but you could backfill the other three daytime shifts, you'd have at least seven days of coverage, it'd be three nights where there wouldn't be, presumably. That's what that scenario two would get at. Um, you see, I tried to capture active hours or hours that they weren't, I mean, for them, if someone's coming out to work a shift, the Knox County deputies' time starts when they leave their house, they all have take home cars, and so when they leave the house, and so if they're coming out to cover a daytime shift for us, it's like an overtime shift, their time starts when they leave their house, and so the time on the boat, so you're not getting that full coverage here, there is some benefit being on the boat. Um, but they aren't obviously on the road here, patrolling things here, um, so that's the active hours, I was trying to capture what we would actually receive back actively, um, from law enforcement under these scenarios. And so you see, there's some increase, it actually goes to fifty-eight hours roughly, but you know, it's not a full thirty, additional thirty hours. Um, the two resident deputy scenario is what it sounds like, you know, what we've seen is just one resident deputy. Um, acknowledging they haven't been living here, but if you could get two deputies through a contract to live here, that's that scenario, and those are the numbers at fifty percent funded for that second deputy, right now, the county only funds fifty percent of the first forty hours. And we pay a hundred percent of all the overtime and extra costs associated with any other coverage, so um, it isn't a big assumption with that number that the county would be willing to fund fifty percent of that position. Um, scenario four is this concept of an island zone where you'd have three deputies rotating and covering both islands, and that there'd be no line, and that one's North Haven's cop, and this one's vinyl haven's cop, and they don't go over unless there's something significant going on. Um, just like Knox County is divided by zone one and two, east and west of Route ninety roughly. Um, and they just travel between the communities during the shift. Um, so a concept like that would give three deputies, in theory, rotating between the two islands, um, coming and going, they'd have to have the resources to be able to come and go, and you wouldn't necessarily be on a fixed schedule with the one person, so. Um, the one benefit there would be the less likelihood of burnout because you'd be rotating that responsibility three ways instead of just the what had been one or even two. The cost there isn't much different, again, a big assumption that both the county and North Haven would share in some way that their deputy. And then the fifth scenario there is one resident deputy working the, essentially the, you know, the forty hours. Um, and then having, um, another rotation come out where they work three night, or two nights in three days. Just slightly modified from the four day, three night that we were getting last winter. So that's, those numbers there are all what it would be at, estimated at, at fifty percent funded, but that's, that those additional positions in the county sharing some of that cost.
Have you spoke with North Haven about the island zone, or is that, is that something that they mean?
I've talked with Rick about it, and I think if it's something that, you know, between the two boards, it probably would be worth this board sending that board a letter. I mean, Rick and I can talk and brainstorm ideas, but if they're just that, I mean, I was gonna take the direction from, from our boards, and so if that's something that, um, you want to send them a letter or two, um, I can draft that and have you guys sign that and send it along for, for them to consider. Um, you know, they're gonna be in a similar situation where we've seen it, where our deputy, at the time when our contract was full, was covering North Haven because they couldn't find it. So I think to the benefit of both islands, if there was some way to lean on each other with, if you could staff three people, lean on each other, and so there's a little bit more of an ability to fill in, and you don't run into this concern or actual burnout issue. Um, you know, try and, uh, overextend. That, that was, you know, part of the thoughts and the benefit to that, that scenario there, the cost, again, the cost difference isn't much different. A lot of assumptions built into these numbers.
I feel like two rotating deputies. Assuming they can obviously find people to take the job. Which is obviously a problem anyway.
Where do we stand with, uh, where does Knox County stand with filling available positions right now, you know?
See, they're down one person right now, um. And they, so other than that, I think that they have the ability to consider the rotation once, um, we get through August. The busiest part of the season in the mid-coast is over. Um, they have a rover, kind of deputy that can go between both zones during his time. Um, and I think, you know, just staff wise, they, they have then the ability to, you know, do something that they did last winter presumably. You know, I think that in the short term is probably what we're likely to see, and it probably only likely be one person, and there probably is gonna be some gaps in between. Just like before, if there was an overtime shift, if we wanted extra hours, we did put up an overtime shift and someone volunteered to fill it, that was what we got. And if there wasn't a voluntary slot filled, then, you know, it went un, it just went unused or unfilled. You know, so I think in the, at the very least, we'd end up where we were, uh, with someone staying over almost, you know, for those three nights. That's in the most immediate short term, it takes time to hire someone.
Three nights or four nights?
By the way, they worked it last time, it was four day, four day shifts, but there was, I thought it was, um, setups, but they were able to go back like on that last boat that fourth day. If I can confirm that, we can maybe work that out.
Well, just, well, that's the schedule, I thought it was like, you need to panel two. So on the last day, they're working from like six in the morning till they go on the ferry.
That's what they were, they've worked with some of them, you know, last year. They started earlier and were able to leave earlier.
So what's the real difference between that and the scenario number five?
Which.
Because we have more people than one that we were just talking about, the number, scenario number two, because it looks like you get like ten more active hours a week or nine, I guess. So you're just talking about having the resident, and then the rotation would be somewhat different, so it would basically be scenario two, where you'd be getting a little bit more hours.
Right.
You have everyday coverage, is that what you're envisioning?
Yeah, so I mean, difference between, so the two resident, probably the biggest split with two resident deputies, two full-time positions.
The one that Eric was talking about was that.
Which one?
The one that we already had last year, whatever the scenario was.
So scenario, um, one is most, so, yeah, so last year when we had, like in the winter time, before Dan took the full-time deputy position here, they had just sent someone out for a few months there, right, so they sent a different person each week, and so the, so you're assessing the difference between two and five?
Right.
So in two, the, if they worked four days and, and spent those nights during those, between those days, there's still be three days of the week that there wouldn't be someone out here. And so it was backfilling daytime shifts, because those were easier to fill, um, on their end. You'd have a daytime coverage for those other three days, so there'd be someone out here seven days a week, but not necessarily overnight. The other scenario, five, with one resident deputy, uh, where we provide the housing and they stay here those nights, and then the rotation filling in on a nightly basis. So you'd have seven nights covered under that scenario. So you're, basically it's housing, right, so you're not paying the housing cost for those other three nights potentially, you know. And then you get, you do get a little more active coverage.
I mean, I can see the extra cost. I think that's what, I don't know, people seem like they wanted someone here seven days a week, that's why I was kind of leaning, that's why I was asking about the scenario five.
Yeah, I think all of these get seven days a week.
Oh, they do?
It's just different levels of.
I think.
Lack of better word, active coverage.
I think the nighttime is when people, at least definitely, or the summer months is when they, I mean, when they like to see, you know, and hopefully can combine, you know, having seven nights in the summer and, you know, for four months, and then, you know, the four nights for the other eight months or something, is that?
It's possible, I mean, if, as long as they've got staffing over there to send someone out to do that, um.
Or this is all presented on that scenario.
Right. Always is.
Scenario five was.
That's kind of the one that I was leaning towards, but.
All right.
So if we settle on one of these scenarios, how will things unfold then?
We'll have to ask.
You presumably need to get, uh, approval of funding, a certain level of funding, so then you can have any negotiation with, you know, a contract or, or working any other solution now.
They're talking about town funding or county funding?
Well, you need town funding in order to talk with the county about funding anything, so the thought was that tonight's meeting, you might entertain a special town meeting warrant to approve a certain level of funding um, for law enforcement services generally, not specific to any con, any person, any certain agency's contract, but just generally for law enforcement purposes, and if that's approved, then we can go forward. I mean, the county, for this fiscal year, just as we were talking about, well, we've already approved this year's budget, they've already approved their fiscal year twenty budget, which ends in December, and so now's a good time where the county's starting to, you know, just now start their budgeting process for fiscal year twenty-one, um, starting January first, and so now is a, a, a good time in that sense, is that there was partial funding to, to support fifty percent of a full-time deputy for us in this year's budget for them. Um, and then we can work with them over the next couple of months to try and advocate for another level of funding for an additional position or other, more coverage. Um, otherwise, it's presumed we would continue to pay a hundred percent of the extra. I think if we learn nothing through what we've seen in the last few months is, we know there is nothing extra, when there isn't someone to backfill or specifically fill our spots, there is no real backfill. Um, the sheriff has been willing to put up spots and overtime shifts at the county's cost um, in the short term to try and get some coverage out here, but we know it's not seven days a week, and we know it's not overnight. Um, you know, so if we can work with the county to try and see if they'd be willing to cost share anything of the other coverage, acknowledging that there is no backup, there is no back, reasonable backfill for, and no patrol coverage. Um, I think there's some level of on, onus on them to acknowledge that as a county contributor to taxes there for that service. Um, but that's a big piece that we have to work on. And the assumption, you can see it with this number here, you know, if, if it's a hundred percent on us, and we want the seven days a week under scenario three, with two resident deputies, it would be almost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If we did a hundred percent of that second deputy.
That's definitely what we turned down.
Wait, so what would scenario five be at a hundred percent? Is that the hundred and thirty-three? Number?
Yeah, so you have it on the third page of the stapled sheet there. Can't split to it from the screen here.
It's gonna be a hundred and eighty.
So that, yeah, that last column there.
Hundred and seventy-seven, is that what you're doing?
So scenario five, that if the vinyl haven pays a hundred percent of the above forty hours, uh, it'd be a hun, you're saying a hundred and seventy?
Is that how you read these things?
Yeah, so it'd be a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
So it'll be forty thousand, what were we asking for a hundred and?
A hundred and twenty-one.
Well, we had a hundred and thirty last year, so it'll be like fifty thousand if we got no cost there. The sheriff would presume we would, I mean, we probably have to go into it thinking we having the money for a hundred percent by hoping that we get something, or however we go into it.
We'd have to plan for paying a hundred percent, I would think.
And then, yeah. Question, the budgeting for Knox County, the, the cost share somewhere there, which I don't think is unreasonable, but.
People want seven day coverage, you're going to have to pay for it.
Right.
If they don't want seven day coverage, then, okay, but, you know, it sounds like they do.
Yeah, that was the message that I got.
Nice message that we've tended to getting.
And I think, I think.
Over and over and over.
Yeah.
I think either scenario four, if they would go for it, but, I mean, I don't know, that's the thing we had discussed with North Haven, but I think scenario five is the one that we should be looking at, for, for this year, and then maybe over the winter, we could talk with North Haven about an island zone perhaps, I don't know how that would work, but.
Yeah, three and four give you the biggest increase in what I call active hours, you know, where they're physically here on this island, patrolling, you know, working year. You know, and in the long run, if that's something that's more reasonable to go towards meeting the expectations that folks have, then I, I think those are the two options that you should be looking at, long-term.
Three and four.
Either option three or four, and, yeah, just in terms of the amount of coverage that you're actually getting for what you're paying for, I mean, there's, under those other scenarios, if folks are traveling back and forth on the boat. Right, you're not getting everything physically on this island that, you know, you're paying for. Um, so, but in the short term, you know, an amount that would carry us this, but this fiscal year, um, to be able to have something uh, more than just a overtime shift that they currently are willing to fill, that won't be, they don't have a budget to do that going forward, and if we don't do something before they finish their budget, I don't imagine they're gonna put any funding in there for, um, sharing a, a, a special, a spot out here specifically. So, you know, certainly proves us to do something for a certain level of funding to work with.
I think we should shoot for scenario number five, that's my opinion.
So why, why are you the favorite scenario five?
Cause it's, get to someone out here seven days a week instead of what we've been doing. And we don't know if North Haven wants to go in on scenario number four, and just having two deputies out here seems like too much money to name.
But also see it's difficult to build two deputies.
Yeah, I think it was also overkill.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
I don't think we need two cops out here all the time.
Well, they wouldn't be out here all the time, presumably.
Well, no, but.
They'd overlap at times, I guess, but, or would they be out here all the time?
Frankly, I don't see the three any different than five really, other than the ex, the other extra day. You get two, you get eight shifts versus seven shifts.
So, yeah, there'd be two resident deputies.
So you're getting more hours of active patrol and coverage under that scenario for, yes, a little more money.
Don't wonder the time, right?
That wouldn't be overtime too, I guess, is what you're envisioning, right, and the, all the, all the hours would be regular hours.
Right.
That would help with the, the burnout issue, right, if you're having two rotating through a little boat.
I'm fine with that too, but I mean, we need to have something that's gonna be seven days a week, I think that's what we heard, at, at least, uh. Yeah.
Let's see if anyone on the line has anything.
Yeah, I, yes, I meant to, um, mentioned to you to make sure that. No, because we.
Yeah, so Maisy is interested in.
Okay.
I know. As long as this is an okay time to say, uh, say my piece.
Uh, yes, please.
Um, I, I wanted to ask if there was a, a sixth option that, or if you guys have just been considering, thinking about, um, some other options that exist that are more on the preventative side. Um, I've been, I've been thinking about how, how cops often um, show up after violence has happened, um, but don't do, do much in the, in the realm of preventing it. So I'm wondering if any of these, um, could either be partnered with something that, um, provided community support, um, even if it was just a group of islanders that are your go-tos, you call up if you're having an issue, and they have some sort of training to diffuse situations. Um, and just are sort of generally keeping track and are sort of like an elder of elders of the community, and they could be of all ages, but um, something along that lines, is that part of this conversation, or could it be part of this conversation?
Well, it's not part of this conversation now, but it certainly could. Well, it's not part of this conversation now, but it certainly could be. And it's, it, uh, an innovative approach that hasn't been a part of. Policing out here on the island in the past, it certainly could be in the future. I'd, I'd certainly entertain it.
Things dangerous that wanna call on someone that's not a cop to go into diffuse, I don't know what kind of situations you're talking about, but I mean.
Yeah.
In some situations, it could be dangerous, I guess we've had to kind of spell out. How it works, I, I just, I could see it.
I think it is a good idea though for the community to be more involved in policing ourselves, because. Until we have our own police force, we're not saying we're gonna, we can. You know, we have to do a little bit of policing on our own and keep each other accountable and back people up when they. Are in trouble or have seen something that was wrong. So, yes, I think anything along those lines is probably a good idea to consider for sure.
Not, not to be confused with vigilante.
Right, correct. Non-vigilante, yeah, correct.
Yeah, and another sort of thought on that is like, I know that already there's a lot of, um, conversations going around on Facebook and people letting each other know of unsafe situations or, or something along those lines, but. If there was something that was just a collection of, um. I don't know, I guess it would have to be, we would have to think through this more, but, um, sharing of information, um. And it could just be to a smaller group of people and you, you sort of share information through that. Um, avenue, so that unsafe behavior could be reported, um, all, all of those things, and just to explore it from that way.
Something worth thinking about.
What thinking about, yeah. But no, I mean, right now, we're considering, you know, these five options. You know, uh, for the immediate future, but more long-term. Yeah, you bring up some good points, some good ideas.
Thanks. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, what do we have right now in the recovery?
As I mentioned, the, the sheriff is, um, put a few overtime shifts up each week for the next, in two weeks so far. Um, you know, and if someone volunteers to fill it, though, we had the last three days we've had someone out here. Fill an overtime shift, that's coming right now at a cost as a, at a hundred percent of the county. Um, you know, but at overtime and a hundred percent's not something that they're gonna sus, be able to sustain. Um, and so we're left with. We know the trip out here on the ferry boat's too long for the zone one deputy to be able to just scroll on out through our town. Um, so we're not afforded the same level of patrol coverage that other Knox County towns that are, that are, um, on the mainland get. Um, so right now, all we're getting is the, the overtime shifts that they're willing to put up and someone fills. And then, in the meantime, if something happens at night and there's something, or in the daytime, there's something significant, I mean, though obviously. Someone should call, you know, be calling nine one one if there's something ongoing that's immediate and an issue. Uh, we did have someone who emailed us a day later of a, a fight that had gone on at Lanes Island, uh, after fireworks were being set off and. Didn't think that they could call nine one one, because there wasn't a cop here, and I don't think that's something that anyone should feel. Um, they can't call nine one one if something's going that's significant, because there is someone generally on North Haven who could come down and they could. Start becoming en route to come out here, um, as they have in the past for other situations, so. Hopefully folks don't feel so unsafe or so not know that they can't call nine one one still when there's something that's going on.
Surprised that anybody wouldn't know that nine one one still does work.
I know, yeah.
I think, um, did someone had the, was looking to speak, was it Ellen?
Uh, Gabe.
Gabe, sorry.
Yeah, hi, hi, it's Gabe, guys, um, just a question, um. So I know that, um. I'm trying to say this without singling people out, but in the vote, voting down the budget, um, uh. The, the initial law enforcement budget at town meeting, I know that some of you voted it down, so I'm, I'm just curious. In this new proposal, the things that you mentioned wanting to see in the contract, can you clarify? That it, that, um, when you're going into negotiations, that all of the things that you were. Talking about wanting, which motivated you to vote down the contract at town meeting, that, that you are actually. Um, have those things in this new contract, um, that you will wanna negotiate, and I'm thinking primarily. How you, um, ask for accountability, because I know that was a big one, can you, can you just clarify? What those things were that you're asking for again, and that, and assure us that, that those things are in, in this, um. Will, or will be in this new proposed, um, contract negotiation?
Well, my big one, I've said it a couple of times, that while they are here for their shifts during that time period, when they. Are done with their shifts, you know, they are residing on the island during those times, not going somewhere else. So they can readily respond to a call. Coming from North Haven to the south end of Bottom Haven can be a task. And on the accountability part, I mean, we saw that log like they do on Big Island, isn't that kind of what we're looking for, we aren't looking for?
At least that.
Yeah.
At the very least that, you know, and.
I don't think that's too much to ask, I mean. I mean, they must have to keep some kind of a log for their job anyway, don't they?
They do, they did offer, and there is a, like a police blotter type thing that goes out, I think weekly, um, that goes out to, I think. The town clerk here used to be on it, I don't know if he still are or not. I did ask the sheriff if I could get put on it, and I could at least share that with you, it shows activity in all the towns in Knox County that they, that they go to and respond to. And it lists the type of activity and by town, you know, where they were, so. Um, at the very least, that's already something that's created that does go out on a regular basis, that we just weren't getting that, we were getting the tally of the type of incidents. On a quarterly basis.
Yeah.
So at least that's something that comes out more regular, wouldn't require any extra work other than for one time, put our email address. In, in that sender's list, so I can remind them again of, of doing that.
Will that allow us to. Ensure the follow-up is done on incidents that have been reported?
Well, that, that in itself wouldn't, that's just a pure activity log of what they.
Just what they responded to.
Yeah.
I think some of it too has been asked, people have made calls to dispatch, and they feel nothing has been done.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Right. Follow-up or anything, so, so.
Yeah, so the answer to Gage's question is, uh, number one residency and number two accountability. As far as I know, I didn't vote. Down, but those who might have concerned, I didn't know they were concerned if people voted against it, so. Island residency and accountability.
But does, so does island residency in this conversation, it sounds like, it sounds like the board is considering. Coverage, um, to equate to that, so as long as there's coverage, to Eric's, to Eric's comment, um, just a few minutes ago of. Someone being, being available to respond, does that equate to residency, or are you. Saying you'll only consider scenarios one, uh, three, and looks like. Five, maybe, that has a, has an assigned resident? Or you can, would you, you're considering, um, coverage and, and avail, like availability to respond to equate to residency?
So I think there's a difference between residency, meaning you legally reside here, which you, by statute cannot require. Of a position other than somebody elected official's positions. By contract, someone may agree to do that as terms of employment, um, but by statute, you can't legally require someone, that was the sheriff's point. Um, but I think in terms of what resident, I'm assuming residency means. To Eric's point, if you're, I mean, our shifts generally are nighttime, and so you're not gonna go anywhere anyways, and that you'd be available if. In, in the history of what we've seen recently, the shifts are all consolidated back to back to back to back. And so during those four-day shifts, forty hours, that shift structure, that those nights in between each day. You'd be here, we're paying the housing, you'd be here, but just like any other employee we have or the county employees. Presumably you don't dictate what they do on their days off or their weekends, it is our geography and the fact that we're not connected by road. Um, that makes it so that, um, we know they're not gonna go anywhere, most likely during, in between those, so. Presumably that's what we had worked out last year with the county, with the compensation, when they did the rotation of deputies being slightly changed to seventy-five dollars a day under that, those scenarios to compensate that. After our availability, you're, you know, when you clock out at, say, midnight, from midnight to, to, or, uh, to the next day. We're paying you to be available, um, because we presumably aren't going anywhere else. Um, and so that's something that we had worked out last year, I mean, does that. Clarify, that accurate for the board, does that clarify Gabe's question?
They might vote in Brooklyn, but.
Right, as opposed to them.
When they're working here, they're gonna lay their head down at night on Wild Haven, not on North Haven.
Right, right.
Yeah, that, that, that clarifies, clarifies my question, I just, I guess, I guess it comes to the point of, um, you know, this, this has to go back out to public vote. And fu, funds have to be approved, um, I mean, granted, I don't know how many people voted this down, I think. We said like a dozen, maybe there are a dozen people there at the town meeting that voted it down, so. It could be that, you know, more people would vote for, um, approving funds, I think, I think my point would be that if, if we're. If this is going back out to the public to approve the funds, I think we just wanna make. Absolutely clear how this proposal is any different than the proposal that, um, was voted down at town meeting, and so the reasons why it was voted down. How are, how is the public going to be assured that those reasons, um, are being taken into consideration and that there will be some sort of monitoring? And way to assess, like, you know, our, our thing, our, yeah, how, how, how are, um. We monitoring the accountability, how are we monitoring the responsiveness, um, so, uh, we can be assured that. Whatever funds we're, we're voting for are, um, not gonna yield the same result that caused the, this year's budget to be voted down.
Understood, yeah, I think that's what you're saying, you know, you know. We, if we're going to go back to a town meeting, we're going to need to tell people, you know, this is what we want to contract to. Reason, even because they approved the money, if Knox County is not a minimal to both terms, does not mean we have to spend the money or sign the contract.
Right.
But we just have the ability to do so because the funds are available.
Well, the funds were also, you know, in the budget initially, so that's the, that was the point that was made at, at the town meeting of like. Why, why are we voting for this when we haven't gotten what we wanted, um, so far, um, in negotiations, but by, by. Not voting for the hundred and, uh, twenty-one, three thirty-five, Andy had to go the next day and was not able to negotiate, so. It's just, I guess what is like, how is this any different, you know, it, the, the budget could have been. The budget could have passed and we could have already been in the negotiation with that amount of money. So now we're just like, okay, now we need to approve funds so we can negotiate, um, I guess I'm.
Okay, we're asking for a senator to get a more amount of money to. Make sure that the concern is brought up at town meeting and that the community hearing can be met.
Understood, understood.
Voting it down was kind of to open the eyes of Knox County Sheriff, just looking, hey, we are not pleased with the service we've been paying extra for. And really need you to pay attention, and I think it did work in that sense, and I know, yes, we have to go back and ask for money and then go back and renegotiate, but. At least both parties are aware, hey, something needs to change from what has been happening, this hasn't been working, so.
Okay, so our next step needs to be determine a dollar amount to ask for, especially coming in. Does the date?
Yes, I gave you three different, um, versions in there with three different amounts. Ewan, are you trying to ask a question or did you just become unmuted by accident?
No, I wanted to ask a question. Um, may I?
Go ahead.
Would it be? Would it be possible to negotiate first and try to come up with what we're asking for and then come to the town for the funds? That are required to meet those, um, needs once it's negotiated with the sheriff's department rather than the other way around?
It'll take much longer.
Well, so it's possible, the other thing that, from a timing perspective, is that, you know, we commit taxes usually the first week of September, so the tax bills then go out, and so. You're agreeing to saying this is what we're gonna ask the taxpayers for, so from a timing perspective, and that's, that timeline, um, it would be. Better if it was aligned with that commitment process, and so if we're able to, uh, review that. And get an approved amount before, then that can just be sent out as one tax bill, otherwise, a second tax bill would have to go out to raise those funds. Uh, and or, um, fund balance used for it entirely, um, so it's just that, part of it was a timing issue, the other part of it is, I mean, to go in. And negotiate with, you know, you have zero dollars to start with, and so. I mean, if we're talking about significant changes, I guess that's what I was trying to get at with the proposals, is that I wasn't hearing anything, the reality of a significant change in the short term, because right now, we know we've got almost zero. Patrol coverage, um, so it sounded like it was more prudent to get something, even if it was closer to what it was in the short term. So that we don't continue to have nothing, um. And then we can get, then, then we can negotiate once we know what the taxpayers are willing to fund, fully hearing their concerns and acknowledging what. We just talked about in terms of accountability and availability, um, in the, in the activities logs.
Why don't we? Ask for, and.
I think.
To, I think, I think you just.
I think we're back to what, what Gabe said.
I think we need to.
We're back to what Gabe said, if.
We need to have scheduling, how many, you can ask for. A, you know, a full dollar amount, assume, you know, just. If we can get it, if we can't get that, at least we can fund some sort of continuation of our previous contract out of that. But let's not try to have too many special town meetings here. So, I see this one here for two hundred thousand dollars, which would more than cover. Option five, or you recover.
Or three.
That's it. So it would not cover option three, right?
So I mean, by the time a, a second position most likely can be filled, if they have to hire someone, it's gonna be, but probably. December or January, if they knew right off the bat, so there's, there's a, a field training that they have to go through, and if they're already. So I mean, there's some lead-up time to hiring another person just right out of the gate, you know, so I mean, for funding purposes, you wouldn't need a full twelve months of it. Based on what you see, what I presented there for actual cost, right, so you do have the ability to, from what you see on those numbers, you know. What we don't know, the biggest unknown in terms of cost, is cost share, right, and so is the county willing to acknowledge that we get. Little to no coverage if we don't, if we don't have the contract. And when there isn't someone out here for those four days filling that contract, again, we're back to nothing, and so, as it's something they're willing to acknowledge, that they rattle off stats and numbers and how bad things seem to be or how productive they've been, I'd say.
Yes.
In the last few years, is also an admission and acknowledgement that there's a problem, so. There has to be some responsibility on the county to acknowledge that, you know, we're willing to take part of, take care of a community that's part of our. Jurisdiction, so I think that's a big unknown though, so I mean, that you, something to think about in terms of an amount. In, at town meeting, it can always be lowered on the floor.
Right.
But you can, you can't increase it unless you word the warrant article in a way that to see what sum. Is approved, you can write a warrant article that says that to see what sum, and then it can on the floor go up or down.
I'd say we just go with this one, here, two hundred thousand dollars, but. You know, so it says August twenty-six, twenty twenty, there's a lot of times, I mean, it says right here that the register will be. Present from six P M until adjournment, but it should, right there at the header.
They should, what?
At the header, it should say six o'clock.
Yeah, it's up to you to decide the time and the day, I, I threw in the twenty-six, if that's something, that's a week.
That's one thing.
So I don't know, it's up to you, do you wanna wait two weeks, you wanna try and do it next week? Um, part of my thought was just, do we wanna try and line this up with the tax commitment that usually goes out in the first week or two of September?
I think if it's moving, yes.
Why don't we? Why don't we have it not have a number like you said?
Oh, that's okay.
You can decide on the floor, did you just, the warrant article would then read to see what sum. Um, and presumably you would still say to, to be raised in or appropriated from taxation.
If people feel strongly one way or the other, then.
Yeah.
I think we should just go in there with.
Okay. To see what some people want or.
Yes, and then, because if we say two hundred thousand, people might come up there, all right, because that number's too high, and we'd be like. Well, we, I guess we can always lower it, like you said, but I think we should just go up there and just figure it out, if, if there's a lot of people there with strong opinions, we can. Figure it out at, at a time, that's my opinion. Okay, I move we approve and sign a warrant for a special town meeting to be held August twenty-six at six o'clock. Okay, I move we approve and sign a warrant for a special town meeting to be held August twenty-sixth at six o'clock P M at the Wild Haven School. Um, two articles on the warrant, one, uh, to see what sum the town will raise, uh, for law and ser-, law enforcement services from taxation. And, uh, second article to see if the town will vote to approve the Wild Haven Harbor ordinance amendments.
Don't have to say the article about the moderator doing that.
That's article one, yeah.
Yeah.
And also plus included an article to, not the moderator. But the second, is there any more discussion?
The intention would be to have presumably an outdoor meeting and, and I haven't actually asked the school if that day works for them. Um, so to coordinate that with them, um, the thought would be to have an outdoor meeting, which is within realistic expectations of a turnout crowd. It's like we did with that race field, but there's better parking, better access. We can get microphones set up easier.
They can move the second in. Any more discussion? All those in favor? And you can get a, all the official language.
It'll be ready in the morning, yeah.
Perfecto.
We'll, we'll post it tomorrow.
All right, we are making progress. Sometimes it doesn't feel like it, but I took care of new business. So we'll go to report, the town manager.
Um, someone wanna share their copy of, can't split the screen right now. So just run through a few things, um, quickly. Um, we were, in case you heard, there were a couple of days last week that it was a little slower. There were two of the clerks that were doing, um, two full day, most of the full day training for trip, for the Trio software, and just the, they were offering and new updates and new changes that they wanted to stay up on. Um, the heat pumps have been, the deposit's been put in for those and while we missed this year's, uh, hopefully this year's heat wave, um, it'll be good to go for next summer's heat wave. And there were certainly days where it was eighty in here, um, and so the staff and give them credit for working with the fans and what we had in here to stay cool, but it was quite toasty. So that would be, we'll definitely appreciate that next year. Um, and working on developing a work plan, solidifying the work plans for the fellow, the Island Fellow, that starts in September. Um, so Gabe and I will work on, um, ironing that out, leaving some flexibility for what interests they have, um, but the pri- priority being more of the G I S work and and working with the strategic plan and working with committees on certain things and making sure they're moving forward on stuff. Had mentioned the property abatement in the, we, in the report that I sent out. Uh, the full-time public works position has been filled. Um, we start next week. The backhoe, we did get our, our caterpillar backhoe, um, back on the island the other day. Um, the new one is still being, um, fitted with the thumb and a few other things, and then they'll swap that out with the dump one. And we'll stick the dump one over and we'll transition the other one there. Um, so that's moving forward. Um, did have a complaint about the thoroughfare, a new complaint about the third airboat launch. Um, someone was walking on the surface of it and where the water, I'm picturing where the water has just kinda worked out the material underneath. It was thin enough that they actually went through the surface that was there. Um, they were largely fine, but they did get bruised and cut up. Um, and let me know, the guys did, um, did mention it and they did put some patch up there, but is by no means, as we know, a, a long-term solution. And so I've brought this up before in terms of that property and something I think we need to continue to look at. Um, you know, with the year-to-year lease at, you know, from an ownership perspective, it presumably makes it a little more difficult for taxpayer funds to go towards that year-to-year owned property, if you will, or lease property. Um, is there something we can work out with the property owner? There are some grants out there if we can own it or in what they, what they see as a hundred-year lease, uh, would qualify that. And so I think something that is to work with the property owner on to see how we can do that. Um, I did call Marjorie, I guess last time it needed work, um, you know, something that the Island Transporter Company was part of. Um, so I had called, uh, reached out to them, but hadn't heard back yet and to see if there's any interest or willingness there. Um, but just keeping you in the loop on some of that, but that's something that, um, if not sooner, next year's budget is probably gonna have to consider or look to try and do, um, to improve that. High Street Sidewalk, I did talk with Kevin, um, about the High Street Sidewalk. Um, there was no quick fix or Band-Aid, if you will, that he'd be willing to put his name on. Um, he said it's not, you know, you just need to re, you just need to redo it. Um, needs to be replaced and needs to be done right. Um, so unfortunately, from what he sees, there's just nothing, you can't just put like a s- a skinny mix, if you will, on top of it. Um, so that's something that we'll, you'll have to figure out if that's something you wanna plan as an addition to another capital project to start doing now, incorporate in, in something in the future or work at, you know, work at in small chunks as we've done with other sidewalks in town before, u- using town crew. So there's some things to consider there. It's a challenging area with not a lot of width going down that hill. You gotta ditch on one side of it and private property on the other presumably. Um, without pulling out and trying to find maps of right away in ownership. Um, and anything that would potentially have to expand the width of that sidewalk to meet A D A requirements. Um, likely have to look at incorporating the drainage under the sidewalk or putting some sort of banking retaining in the hillside. Um, so I think there's, it's not easy, um, but something we can continue to explore and work towards understanding what we need to do there.
Yeah, something needs to be done because that's fallen apart.
The, I mentioned the more public works facility, the group, uh, the bridge, the gallamander. Um, I did also talk with, while I was talking with Kevin about the possibility of a slab, which is a more permanent solution underneath the gallamander. If it's known that we wanna keep that there, um, um, or the stone, it's a significant price difference to dig it out and put the gravel, the same prep presumably would be involved for the most part to put the gravel there, but it would be a substantial cost to put the concrete underneath it instead and put a slab there. Um, so I assume that, I'm just asking while talking with them, so I assume we're gonna wanna stick with this gravel for now. It's a, you know, shorter term solution.
You did talk to Kevin about the slab?
I did, yeah.
You know, you get a cost?
I mean, I didn't ask him for a, a quote. I just took what we did at the transfer station and um, changed the dimensions of it and used a similar price there. Um, you know, so it's probably gonna be between fifty-five hundred and seven thousand dollars, my, based on that work, um, to put a slab there.
So if we're gonna move, we have to move the gallamander. Either gravel or concrete pad. Let's try not to move it too many times. I would just simply move it, lay a concrete pad and not have to worry about laying down more gravel in a couple of years and having to move again.
Yeah, I mean, so I think it's worth remember, recalling the, what Molly had shared with you as her follow-up report and next steps. You know, what she had done is not a, as you know, probably recall, not a, it's fixed, you know, it's good to go for another thirty years. You know, this was like a five-year kind of outlook on it. So there's some bigger discussions that still need to happen as a long-term solution. So I was just curious to know, like, just to pick a brain about the slab idea. Um, if, without knowing long-term what the plans are with either that exact object that's on the registry or, or what you wanna do in the future. I don't know if you wanna commit to a slab right there right now. I just figured I'd throw it out.
There's been any plans near or far of moving the location of the gallamander. I mean, been there forever and probably, hopefully it'll be there when we're old men.
Well, it's, there's nowhere to go with it anyway.
Well, right, but those are all things that she posed, right, in terms of if the goal is to preserve that piece. Those are all things that, you know, wrapping the building in the winter time, obviously all it's gonna help, but it was again, like more like a five-year outlook on it. But there are still parts in there that have significant rot. There are still things in there that need to be worked long-term. Um, so just.
I mean, I think we should just put the crushed rock under it because that structure itself needs a lot of work. So if we're gonna put a, put a slab under something, we should have more plans on, you know, putting the post, new, four new posts up on, you know, a roof instead. If we're gonna spend fifty-five hundred on that, we should have a plan on what we're gonna do, not just put a slab under it because that roof and posts and everything. I mean, I think we need to think about what we're gonna do, but in the meantime, just put the crushed rock under it to keep it from rotting.
I mean.
If we're gonna preserve it for the long term, we might have to remove indoors. Wouldn't that probably be the best solution?
Well, I was thinking like, would they, could you make, build some kind of, um, a structure and have sides that you could remove? You know, and keep it dry and put them on in the winter and.
Right.
Good. I think it's gonna stay right there.
Yeah.
We may, it may be in, indoors, it may be a building around it. And I'm all in favor of putting a slab under it. We, we, we need to replace the roof of both. You can certainly do that with a slab on top of a slab.
Right.
But she already has presented us with certain continuation efforts. Anyway, I gotta reread them again, but she presented us with a pretty, a pretty thorough plan for keeping it whole.
Um, that was, that was it.
Okay, so you do make a decision then, correct? So, or do, you don't have to, like, do we want to?
We need to do one of the others.
Well, I mean, well, yeah, but you, you know.
We wanna make that decision now.
Yeah, yeah, you wanna make, you wanna make a decision, right? Okay. What was the cost? Seven, seven thousand?
I was guess, I was estimating based on passwords you've done for us.
Okay, Phil has made a motion to lay a concrete slab. Can we go and lay a concrete slab? I'll second that motion. There any discussion? Okay, see none, all those.
Do you wanna modify your motion to say where the funds come from?
Yeah, it was just mass.
And how much money do we have?
Getting the money from historic, uh, what's the name of that fund?
Do we have enough in there, Doug?
No, yeah.
Okay.
Well, shouldn't we get a quote first before we hold on that?
Up to and not to exceed.
We, you know, we explained the concrete pad. We normally lay a concrete pad and if it costs too much, we just don't lay a concrete pad. But at any rate, there any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. All right, so.
Could I ask, this is, this is Ellen, could I ask a question?
Quickly, please.
Um, you're gonna, you're having a special town meeting for the harbor ordinance. Could the quarry ordinance and the helicopter ordinance that we finished be included in that special town meeting?
It's too late, unless we're going to go back. We've already approved the warrant.
Can we amend that motion?
I mean, we do have those other ordinances we worked on. Are they ready to be?
Yeah, if they're ready to be reviewed and.
Are they ready, Ellen?
My understanding is they're ready. Andy was gonna maybe run them by the M M A or someplace, but my understanding is they were ready.
Do they need to, do they require a, um, public hearing again? Have these changes been substantial enough that they require a public hearing?
I'd have to look at the minutes to, to say.
Haven't they been to public hearings?
If the changes are significant enough, they have to have a whole other public hearing.
I don't think we made any changes. I think someone wanted to make changes and it came before the selectmen and they said, no, no changes. That's my understanding. Andy could maybe double check just to make sure I'm right.
Yeah, I'd have to double check and I certainly don't have it in front of me at the moment.
But assuming there are no changes and assuming it's been to public hearing, could they be voted on? Because we worked on these many, many, many months ago at your request and they've never come up before a vote.
Well, I think Andy, you need to make sure that, you know, made any significant changes. I can't, I can't remember now. It's been.
Since February or March.
Well, before that.
Yeah, I can't remember if there was any significant. I think there were some changes we made to the quarry ordinance, like.
No dogs allowed.
Well, I mean, I think there was some language to wonderful things, so I think we probably should have a public hearing on again. People can't remember that, I feel like we need some pretty significant changes.
Cause we did, we changed the helicopter ordinance, the aviation ordinance.
Yeah, we changed, so yeah, I think we need to have a public hearing.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to wait on that one, Ellen, for the time being, I'm afraid.
I'm sure we'll have another special town meeting that's on board and follow up.
But I, but we'll certainly have the schedule of public hearing moved forward with it.
Yes.
But that's going to have to be after current COVID restrictions that we wrote the, because the, of our ability to hold public hearings are only for very specific reasons. And really the only reason we're throwing in this harbor ordinance is because it's ready to go. We haven't made any significant changes and because we're asking for funds for law enforcement. We could not have a special town meeting just for the harbor ordinance right now. We probably came pretty close to violating COVID regulations if we didn't actually at our public gathering a couple of weeks ago. Yeah, oh, yeah. It was definitely more than fifty people.
Luckily, the troopers and the sheriff didn't cite us.
Citation.
Yeah.
Okay, so sorry, Ellen. Okay, so reporting numbers. I have just one thing. Um, I brought it up last year and bring it up again at our, at town meeting, but, um, are the, uh, winter lines and the tip agreement, um, is it worth our time, do you think, to have Andy do a little research for us on how to approach North Haven about, you know, how we could potentially work in something for equitable cost sharing?
Yeah. Yeah, the legal.
Right, you know, I just, you know, because we're, you know, we're on this play off too right now. Regular business and COVID, I just wanna make sure that everyone on the board is in agreement that should become a neetopless priority in the upcoming weeks.
Well, I mean, we've already, it already got approved for this year, so we have like a whole other year to wait.
It might take a while to work that one through. Okay, that's all I have.
I have, uh, back to the sidewalk again, um, I, I'm, I'm in favor of start, of rebuilding that sidewalk. And not just thinking about it, but rebuilding the sidewalk and having Kevin do it because if anybody's gonna be able to accommodate those, uh, conditions that you described in contingency, it's gonna be in.
You probably need engineering on it first, Ellen.
Well, if you move, if you use local funding, you don't need it. Uh, this, verify with the state, it's, it's a long estate aid road, but, um, you know, I, I don't, I have to clarify whether it's needed or not.
If there's any way to get around it, he's a perfectly capable engineer when it comes to something like that.
You do need to clarify where the funding's coming from.
Well, it'd be, sidewalk fund has how much in it?
Uh, it's got roughly three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand in it, but, um, my understanding was most, majority of that was uh, the understand, uh, earmarked for the main street sidewalk project and part of a cost share that we would put up and already committed to for the grant funding that we're, that we're applying for.
That means that we never have made a formal motion that that money would go to main street. That money is still completely. That's what, you know, I, I think we need to keep that in mind, but we can use it. We, we have never made a motion to use it for that.
Yeah, and I'd rather see it go to a sidewalk that extends the existing one for the Perry Terminal, but that clearly isn't gonna happen. And this sidewalk is, is hazardous as any we've got, so.
Can you give me a realistic timeline on when you're expecting? We'd like to see that completed, so I.
Friday.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think we should, we should see if Kevin can give us an estimate uh, so that we know what we're talking about and then, uh, bring that up at the next election meeting, decide whether we, if he can give us a figure by then and decide what to do now.
Are you, to clarify, talking about, uh, between Ingersoll and the fountain?
Correct.
Yeah.
And it's terminated, yeah, which, not technically, but yeah, whatever, you know. Okay, anything else?
See, I have a question about this, this, uh, the path that goes to the school by Jerry Dowie's. Is that town property, school property, or what is that?
Property, I believe.
School property. It's all the way down, okay.
It should be memorialized, that's where I smoked my first cigarette.
I saw you in the smoke hole.
It's, it's in pretty hard shit.
I got angry. I got anglicized with rocks a few times when I was a kid.
Well, that, that's true, that, that hell is really falling apart there.
It needs to be cut back and it needs to have something under it. I probably just got it the other day and it's. Yeah, it is, it is. I, that's why I was asking, I mean, I don't think that would take, you could.
Oh, yeah, speaking of somebody who does hot talk, you know.
Ask.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Speaking of a simple, speaking of a simple project, but yeah, that's all.
Yeah, I'll put some answers on that one.
That's a good idea.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by John Paul, all in favor about like, care of what we did, all things.